All the meaning to order. Thanks for your patience and welcome back, everybody. First, I am a business is accentuate positive. I think we want you at the podium for sound, right? Or are we using a microphone?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, wherever.
Welcome to Orchard Hill, everybody. Kent Leir, Principal of Orchard Hill. When I receive or getting ready for the accentuate positive, I was like, nothing's more boring than elementary school without kids. But as you probably saw, I want to thank John and all the maintenance crew for giving the office a face if we've got the new carpets and new flooring. And the desks will be in there at the beginning of next week. So I really appreciate that. Nice to have a little some brightness going on there. And also I want to thank Jessica Hamlin and Tiffany Britton. Here at Orchard Hill, we've done quite a bit of hiring over the summer and we're doing quite a bit now. And I know that they're processing a lot of documents and helping me get ourselves stamped for the second. So that's about all I have today.
Thank you.
She is here already. Yeah, Heather Lowen, you know.
I want to a lot of shame for this.
So you guys probably know and are aware that I was running the elementary center school program. So just can give a little bit of an update on that. We were able to serve a total of 134 of our elementary kiddos in the summer 53. We're really focused out in the first and second grade literacy focus. And then we had 81 in a migrant program. But it was super fun. And when we all met back together with that team last week, Brett asked us to share like, what was the highlight of your summer? And you know, for me and Allison and Tiffany, we all said, oh, hands down, summer school. It is like something that is a really special treat to be able to engage with. You get to give kids experiences that they've never had and really get to put on that full inclusion hat. So we took them to Wild images, the movies, splash pads. Some of the kids got to go to the House of Mystery. It's a big deal. And then we wrapped it all up. I think you probably saw the video of Field Day, which was really sweet. But one of our inclusion kiddos came up like very seriously and asked me, Miss Lo, can we just have one more day of summer school? I was like, oh, honey, I wish. I wish we could do this forever. So I just want to share that like summer school is such a special opportunity for staff, students, and admin and families. So that went really well. And you know, just like Kent mentioned, there's a deep appreciation for John and the team. TES got a new parking lot. We are fancy now. Like it looks really good. And we got some paint on our exterior walls and just want to express my appreciation to all of his teams, you know, from the maintenance to the summer crew to our custodians who keep everything nice, cleaned up and ready to go. So just everything's great. And then once I will note, just appreciation for John working with our safety committee to install those cameras. I was just checking them out. I was like, ooh la la, this is fun. So I'm really excited and appreciative of that. So that's it from talent.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board. Good to see you all. Yeah, thinking about going into this year, it really my first thing I thought of and then talk to Brent a little bit about it too, but just for me selfishly coming into year two, it just feels like a completely different experience. And so I'm super pumped to be a part of this team and talent middle school. And I know we got a lot of work ahead, but I'm feel lucky to be principal here. And just wanted to give a few shout out for some staff, Deanne Tanner, how she's our office manager and always in continually keeps me organized. I appreciate that she gives me as much sarcasm back to me as I gave to her. So it's worked out well for us. I want to give a shout out to Derek Robman. He is our new AD. Now of a very late hire and he has jumped in and I think we have, I don't want to say officially, we are very close to having all fall sports bowl where volleyball staff is official. And so it's cross country. And football, we are really close and I he has just jumped in and taken a big weight that was I was feeling. So really grateful for him in that. I want to give a shout out to Jessica Hamlin. Look, her and I have chatted a lot about a number of different things and just her always there to support our custodial team as well. Steven, Anna and Mike, the work that they do over the summer when we get, you know, a pseudo summer and they are there and all the hard work that they put in. And last but not least, I'm the newest addition to the district, but our goats, if you have not seen the goats, honestly, have done actually amazing cleanup at the middle school in the back part of the track. And I've joked a lot that my family has visited me more in these last few weeks than it did all last year. Yeah, they've been fun, fun addition to the team. But thank you all.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board. Inwin Ross, Principal of Pirate Ship. I'm going to shake this podium a little bit. My heavy computer apparently. So I just want to echo what everyone else has said. Some highlights have happened so far. Definitely over the summer, we had credit retrieval that we host at the end of June and then also the secondary summer school that Allison and the team came to PHS and hosted. And we're just really impressed by the work that happens through the summer. A lot of people think in the school year happens from September to June, but we all know that credits are being earned over the summer. So we had freshmen earn 10 and a half credits, sophomores earn 12.25 credits, juniors earn 22.5 credits. And we were able over the summer to graduate six additional seniors. We are still hard at work with two more, which would make a total of eight additional. And really proud to say that we've engaged two additional students who will finish with a fifth year with us. And so we're really proud of that re-engagement work. Also want to give a shout out to John, the facilities crew and Alan Tappin and our custodial crew at the high school. Our building looks phenomenal. It's shiny. It's bright and it's ready for kids and teachers to come in and fill it up. I know it's going to get busy really soon, but it looks great. And we're really thankful for that. Lots of activities and athletics happening. We are really proud. Our FFA just a couple of days ago hosted a leadership camp with their officers, and that was a really great opportunity to reflect on years past and build for the future. They actually have this construction theme that's really exciting. So we're excited about that. Jay, oh, we had a Jay Pal football camp the last couple of days and just to be able to hear that our football athletes are engaging with our young students. Our freshmen primarily did a lot of the work with those younger kids. And so just that, you know, their learning and giving back to the community. Cheer just got back from OSU at a really exciting camp and they're chomping at the bit to teach us new things and just shared spirit and legacy. And our marching band and color guard are hard at work right now at their band camp, getting everything ready for fall. So great things. And other than that, again, we just want to thank HR, like everybody else has said, we're bringing on some great awesome new staff. I also want to shout out to our instructional coach, Alyssa Barber, who's helping a lot of our new staff integrate into PLCs, make sure that's a really seamless transition. And so we're just really excited to get started. Thank you guys.
Thank you. Daisy from the board.
I think Mr. Scott has his time raised on.
Oh, oh, Aaron's online. Okay, great.
Hey, good evening, Board. Just thought I'd drop in really quick. I wanted to share a couple of quick things regarding PTRA. First thing, we're really excited about welcoming our new middle school teacher. Shannon Harley has recently moved up here from Arizona. She's got a lot of experience with online teaching as well as in-person teaching, tons of energy. We're really excited. I think she's going to really reinvigorate our team and our kids at the middle school level. And then secondly, I want to share another development in the PTRA world. We are pleased to announce that we are going to be moving our physical location this year. So we've been at Phoenix Elementary for four years. They've been a great home for us, great partners. And the staff there have treated us like family, but there's been some kind of space challenges at PES. It's been been we've been had to share space with a lot of different programs. So we're going to be moving over to Orchard Hill this year. So happy about that. Thank you to Kent for graciously agreeing to have us come over. And we're looking forward to building some new relationships over there with the fine folks at Orchard Hill. And that is it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Aaron. I didn't realize you've joined us virtually. So thanks for the update and you couldn't see it, but Kent had a very gracious face.
I'm gonna have to get more info.
Stop it thing. So yeah. Okay, awesome. That means I'll probably say Aaron more when I'm dropping her off. I don't know if that's good or bad.
He's has bumped up.
All right, next is citizens comments. And as a reminder, school board meetings are meetings of the school board held in public, not meetings with the public. As a general rule, the board will not engage in discussion with the public during this portion of the meeting. When your name is called, come forward and state your name. If joining virtually, please use the raise hand feature, address and identify the organization, if any, that you represent. Keep your remarks brief and respect the three minute time limit. Complaints about staff members cannot be discussed in an open session and must be handled through a complaint procedure. And I do have an in-person request from Jody Fay. Come on up.
Thank you. I like how you start your meeting with positive. Sets the tone.
Yeah, yes, thank you.
Good evening, Board of Directors. My name is Jody Fay and I'm a resident of the district. My property directly borders the Bear Creek project you will be discussing tonight. When I purchased my home nearly three years ago, I chose it specifically for the privacy it offers and the assurance because of its location in a flood zone that no structures would be built behind it. That privacy and the sense of safety it provides is now at risk. The plan for covered structures and a compostable toilet could invite overnight use and increase activity right behind our homes. I want to be clear, I fully support outdoor education. I work in a neighboring school district and understand the value of nature-based learning and connection to the outdoors. I spend much of my personal time hiking the surrounding mountains in our area. My concern is not about the concept, but about the process and the impact on the people most affected. The project timeline shows significant outreach, community meetings, stakeholder engagement sessions, surveys with positive support. But no one from our neighborhood, to my knowledge, was invited to participate. The first we heard about the project was in early June, when a letter arrived on our doorsteps on a Friday scene. The cleanup work would begin the following Monday. The wheels were already in motion. The change has been dramatic. Where we once heard birds, we now see and hear the freeway. Two of the few trees left standing behind my fence have since blown over because their roots were disturbed. I understand there's a plan to plant trees, but they will take considerable time to grow and provide the noise buffer we once had. Not to mention a privacy buffer from people who will now be walking behind our properties. For context, I am providing before and after pictures of the area behind our houses. I have three key concerns. Locate one is location of structures. Will our new view include rooftops of gazebos or the compostable toilet? Where will they be located? It's difficult to tell from the map. Two, uses and usage and safety. Will the site be inviting for overnight camping or unsupervised activity? And how will it be monitored? And three, long-term maintenance. Can the facilities department realistically maintain the space given existing demands? My request is this, please ensure that adjacent homeowners are included in the final planning phase. I encourage scheduling a walk of the property with a planning group and a homeowner to gain a better understanding of where the structures will be placed. The students will use this property occasionally. We will live with it every single day. Thank you for your time and for considering the voices of those mostly impacted.
Thank you. So thank you. So much. These out everybody. Appreciate it. Okay. Did we have anybody online who would just speak?
No.
Don't think so. Okay. All right. Next is superintendent report.
Thank you, Fred Campbell. First, I want to just start with the email went out to all staff today and board members to welcome people back. There will be also additional notices to check your email. We are a week and a half away from our traditional and annual welcome back at the high school. It will be a little bit different this year. We do have a guest speaker that will be the coming that day and we will be doing it in the comments, which accommodates that guest speaker a little bit better. So we're really excited about that and to kick off our in-service. As you notice on the schedule, we do start before in-service week with new staff, hoping all our new staff. We continue to invite our classified new staff, which is a valuable time for us to do some pre-in-service, get to know you and some other activities that we can have where time allows to be a little bit more formal or informal to get to know our new staff. I want to highlight facilities. Again, it has been kind of a theme tonight, but this hasn't come out yet, but we got some copies that will be mailed out to all districts on the facility newsletter or magazine. And these are the tennis courts that we submitted to be on the front page of that. And congratulations to John and his team for for that work. And there's so many of the pictures and there's an article and we have a couple of other copies too, but and then we'll get a copy to all the board numbers.
What does that acronym stand for? That's that magazine?
It's the Oregon Schools Facility Management Association and John is currently the vice president of that. So you've been in a leadership role for that for the last several years. Quickly, I just want to announce amount of state student travel that we have coming up, just so the board knows and understands that on the 29th of August, the high school cross-country team is going to be heading down to Shasta College to be in a cross-country event. And then our football team on the 5th of September will be traveling to Brookings via 199 that goes through California. So technically in out-of-state travel. Couple other things that I want to share with you that actually exciting news when it comes to PERS. Sometimes that's not super exciting or positive, but is the, you know, the board made an investment to qualify for the employer incentive fund of $1 million that the board did a few years ago and then added $500,000, which is basically basically money from interest that have accrued. And we applied on July 1st to do that, submit that, and then we were awarded. So in addition to that $1.5 million, we received from the state an additional $375,000. So 1.875 million will be deposited into the existing cash side account and that will give us rate benefits till 2037. So
Thank you.
We, yeah, just a lot of work and you know, her predecessor and my predecessor have made those moves to help us with that PERS rate before. And this will, this will continue to help us for the next 12 years. And as you know, our PERS rates are increasing dramatically. Next of all years. Finally, I just want to end with the reunification drill and thinking this staff here, thanking all of our staff that participated in that. It was a huge undertaking and it was a much smaller scale than men for did a few years ago. That was gigantic. Ours was a little smaller scale, but it was still a lot of work and coordination. And really appreciate the students, the families, the staff, our first responders, the partners that participated in that drill. Monday, I guess that was. And ended, but went well and not well in a sense that we did everything perfectly, but it was successful because we learned a lot. We will continue to debrief and hold a team together, probably in September, once we gather all the feedback and kind of give a more formalized debrief at that time of all the participants. And then Rebecca, I want to kick it over to you because you went to the safety conference this summer and it might tie in well with this reunification.
Yeah, just a couple of weeks ago, I went for the 21st annual safety conference for the Oregon School Resource Officer Association. One of the very first speakers that they had was a man named Jermaine Galloway and he spoke about mostly about new and old drugs and addictions and youth. He also has a podcast called Talk Podcast. I did take like probably four pages of notes just from this one speaker and learned a lot of, a lot of stuff about addictions. And youth.
It was a podcast.
Talk Podcast. Yeah, it was. It was very educational. Highly recommend following him. There was a lot of really good breakout sessions. One of them that I went to was called enhancing school safety and student wellbeing. And it was ran by ODE Jen Johnson and Dr. Dan Filwiner from, from ODE. They did, it was a school safety and prevention intervention, behavioral safety, suicide prevention, bullying, harassment, intimidation, sexual violence, cyberbullying, and prevention for those things they did. They, there's a safety tip line called Safe Organ, which I think is really important to know. It's 998 U line. There's also first exploitation and online targeting children. There's a website called takeitdown.org that will take child images offline, like pretty much immediately. And I think that that's good information to know. They were really hammering it into people that building baloney and suicide prevention and supportive or punishment and those sort of situations. And I think all was really also very educational. They did a sex abuse prevention course with Pace. And McKinsey next was the speaker on that one. And probably the hardest one that I did besides the sexual abuse prevention course, that one was pretty heavy. There was a speaker there. Her name was Carly Posey and she was a Sandy Hook parent. And she had one kiddo in in the classroom where the event started to take place. She said, something that really struck with me was learning about safety as a life skill. So I wanted to pass that knowledge along because that really kind of hit, hit pretty heavy with me. And if you have any questions, I have tons and tons of notes on all these. There was multiple other breakout sessions that I went to, but it was a really good, really, really good conference. Learned a lot.
Yeah. And thank you for just serving on obviously that safety committee and taking the time to do that. It's the first time we've ever sent a board member to that conference. So thank you for for taking the time to do that.
It was great.
You mentioned some of this stuff on addiction and I don't know if I let the board know, but we applied for a recovery grant through the state. It's part of the it's part of the lawsuit on the billions of dollars. And we, over the next three years, we acquired and it's about $500,000 to us to really start getting some preventative measures in as well rather than just responsive. Reactive. So thank for jogging my memory on that one. That's all I have. Thank you so much. Thank you for going to that for the update. Okay, very exciting. Next, we have a strategic plan, a program report.
Yeah, I'll turn this over to Javier. This, we did this last August to kind of give a little bit of a report and we had a draft that I showed you last time and we kind of formalized and updated the data. Really just thankful for Javier for organizing that. And I think you'll see some really good news in here and some areas of growth that will need to work on. So Javier.
Good evening, Board. Thank you for having me here today. Exciting indeed. So my name is Javier Del Rio. I'm the Director of Constructional Improvement and the Strategic Plan Coordinator. That's a long title. And it feels really cozy here today. I'm like, we're missing some lives. Great. Well, that's like break and dance. Yeah. Thank you. So before I start, here's what I want you to do. I'm going to give you an index card. We have a bit of more to do because I always seem to do something like this. And you will need a writing utensil, but if you need one, I am also prepared to give you your.
Here's your assignment.
Let's go to the last slide. I wanted to take one minute to define what makes a good teacher. We talk about this all the time. He's a good teacher. She's a great teacher. You all have had teachers. Some of you are teachers yourselves or have been teachers. So define it for me. Take just a minute. What makes a good teacher? You have about 10 seconds left. And I'm pretty sure you could fill a book with how makes a good teacher. Just finish that sentence or that thought and we'll get back to that, back to that at the end of the presentation. So just to let you know, I know our board has policies about equity and we are committed to equity. And I know that normally we look at the segregated data, but I'm just giving you a pretty brief overview of what's happening in the district at this time. And we'll get more into the segregated data as the year progresses and we'll get more information for subgroups that we're looking at. So just a review, in the strategic plan, we have four main goals that we're looking at. The first one is to attend school regularly. We want at least 85% of our students to, to come to school 90% of the time. Okay, well, we want all the students to come to school at 90% or more of the time, but for the strategic goal purposes, here's what we have. We want succeeding industrial charts and mathematics. We want at least 45% of our third graders to be proficient in, in reading. We want at least 35% of our students proficient in mathematics by the year 2027. We want our kids to be on track to graduation. So we want all of our ninth graders to have at least six, at least six credits by the time that they're done with the ninth grade. Of course, we want our graduation rate to be at least at 96%. We want all students to graduate, but for strategic plan purposes, it's 96%. And here's where we're at. Okay, so in attendance, we have gone down this year so far based on the numbers that we have. And by the way, I'm sharing numbers that have not been published just yet. This is embargo data. So just don't take pictures and post this out somewhere. That's so we went down to, to 64%, but I'm going to break this down by school. I'm going to break it down by, by grade level. So you know what's happening throughout different schools and grade levels. In language arts, we're measure measuring third grade, we went up by 7%. And you've heard me say this before, often when you look at school improvement, it's never about a grand gesture. It's not about a 20% improvement in one year. It's about what happened here after a year. So I'm hoping and we're hoping for 4, 10% over the next few years. So 7% is fantastic. Then we look at eighth grade mathematics and we've gone up 1% from the previous year, which is not a lot. At the beginning, it was 2% whenever it's looked at the data and now more data is coming in and we're about 1%. Okay, big numbers. Don't forget that. Looking at overview of the district. When we look at on track to graduation, this is six, ninth graders who have six credits or more by the time they're done with ninth grade. And we went down to 81% this year. If I look at Armadillo Technical Institute and Phoenix High School, the data doesn't change that much for that particular group. So that's a group that I'm going to be watching carefully and paying a lot of attention to and supporting them as they progress through the, through the years. For graduation rates, I wanted to again separate what happened at the high school, Armadillo Technical Institute and at the district. Now this data that is published right now, there you Now, this data that is published right now that you're looking at is actually last year's data. They're giving us a twenty-three, twenty-four state data and it's where I was a year behind. So Phoenix High Schools at ninety-five percent, which is fantastic, we're back to the twenty-twenty-three graduation rate here. And Armadello Technical Institute has got down quite a bit this year to forty-three percent. And that brings the district numbers to eighty-seven percent this year. When I pause for seconds, you can, you know, look at that data carefully and if you think of any questions, don't forget to be just just writing down your ask. Okay, attendance district wide. I just want to read this. Someone went from sixty-six percent, sixty-five percent, now we're at sixty-four percent. This is district wide, but here's what it looks like for grades. At elementary level, they they make great, great efforts. Uh we're working with a consultant. We change the way we do parent conferences. We do a ton of education when our parents come to our buildings and we've gone from sixty-five percent to seventy-four percent in just a couple of years. And that is fantastic. At the middle school, we're staying at the same level and the high school, we had a pretty big drop this year. And here's what happened uh by grade level. So you have the years twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, and then the bright orange basically tells you the growth or the drop. Um over the years by grade level. If you look at kindergarten all the way through sixth grade, we had a growth. Our attendance improved over the past two years. Six percent, thirteen percent, eleven percent, all the way through until we'd get to seventh grade, which there is no growth. Eighth grade is a little bit of growth and look what happens in the high school. We had a pretty big drop over the past couple of years from um twenty-twenty-three to last year and our seniors. Basically are um I think they have decided that they coming to school is optional. So I mean, I think they can talk about that some of the time, but there's there's a lot to talk about that and a lot of supports are coming into place to deal with all of that. All right. Very great reading. Uh this is what I mentioned mentioned earlier. We went from thirty percent in twenty-three to now thirty-seven percent. We adopted curriculum a couple of years ago. We got all the curriculum last year and we wrote a roadmap for curriculum implementation. And then last year was the first year that we actually can say that we started truly implementing curriculum, having all the materials. And making the incredible effort to make sure that your teachers knew how to use that curriculum. And this year we'll continue that process and it shows on the data. It's it's been remarkable. If you look at the schools. Um we have great growth overall. Tyler Elementary School had an increase of seventeen point eight percent in third grade reading and Orchard Hill, nine point three percent. Phoenix Elementary didn't see that growth, but I want to remind you, um last year. Seventy-five percent of our students learning a second language in third grade were at Phoenix Elementary School. So that's that's something to take into account. We've also put a few measures in place to support Phoenix Elementary as they move through the curriculum implementation process and supporting our kids in learning to read. Okay, for third grade, here's a little bit what I was talking about. I just mentioned that we had a lot of uh third graders who are second language learners. And here's what happens. So this is a cohort of students that just finished fifth grade. We have forty-one point two percent of the students proficient in language arts. And if you look at that same group of kids, we only have thirty percent of those kids be proficient in language arts two years ago. So the kids are getting better. We're getting better and the kids are acquiring language and learning to read as they progress through the grades. So that's a significant number. Okay, uh while this is not part of the strategic plan, I think it's important to show the incredible growth that we see in sixth grade reading. Went from twenty-three point five percent of the students passing uh the reading test in a couple of years ago to thirty-three point six percent uh this year, which is really remarkable. It's not quite the same in eighth grade, uh but we're still seeing some and and that number has come down over the years. However, if you look at, for example, that seventh grade in reading in twenty twenty-four, look what happened in the eighth grade the following year. So we went from sixteen point two percent in seventh grade and then last this past year, we got twenty-eight percent of those kids. That's the same cohort of kids. And that's like, it's nice to see the upwards movement. All right, here's something also very significant. While we do not uh measure first and second grade instead of the strategic plan, we're constantly keeping. A track of how those kids are doing to see how what happens that they progress as they progress through the years. So right now, if you look at your your first and second grade classroom, seventy-five percent. Of those classrooms are really have forty-five percent of the kids meeting proficiency as measured in I Ready. The correlation between I Ready and O S A S has been fairly close in third grade. So I think that's really relevant because now we're getting more and more kids uh basically learning to read. Okay, eighth grade math, here's where we see a drop. It went from twenty-two percent in twenty twenty-three to eighteen percent in twenty twenty-five. And I'm sure you're aware we're making some changes over there as well. Sixth grade, um also significant to mention the growth in mathematics. From two years ago, sixteen percent of the students passing the state assessment to having twenty-four percent of the students passing the state assessment. Remember, our goal is thirty-five percent by eighth grade. So what we want to make sure is that we continue to grow these kids from sixth grade. Now this year they're gonna be in seventh grade and the following year in eighth grade. So we're hoping to see upwards movement again. Okay. So here's mathematics performance, third through fifth grade. Again, not measured in our strategic plan, but. We measure it all the time because that's what they what we look at. Uh third grade, we went from twenty-nine percent of the students being proficient in mathematics to thirty-six percent. In fourth grade, we went from twenty-six percent to thirty-eight percent of our kids being proficient in mathematics. Um and in fifth grade, from eighteen percent to twenty-five percent this year. So that's, those are again very encouraging numbers. On track to graduation, um eighty-one percent. Mentioned this earlier. Um at the beginning of the summer, our administration team or graduation coach is spending a lot of time trying to like bring those ninth graders in. The summer school, we have been able to, as Kellen just mentioned earlier, um get many kids to get more credits, just. Not enough to be on track. So we're gonna be busy this fall with those freshmen. Sophomores this year now as well. So we talked about this a minute ago. What makes a good teacher? Here's what I want you to do. I'm gonna take, I want you to take a minute to. Talk to your partner about what you read. So let's have Michael and Grant. Let's have Rebecca and Don and Paulie and Diana. Talk for just thirty seconds. What did we write in there? What did your partner write that you didn't write and what does that make you think about? Or is it the same thing over here? One minute. Okay, let's bring it back. So I imagine. I just wanna guess you wrote wrote things like somebody who can connect students, somebody who creates a safe environment, somebody who. Enc- encourages and and is motivational to kids. Somebody who can work with colleagues. Yes, somebody who uh implements curriculum with some sort of integrity, um all those things. Uh the one thing I've done is at the university with people, you know, studying the program that often people miss is. Are they having an academic impact? Is this particular teacher getting kids to read, to write and to do math? So I'm leaving you with that thought because. Often we put aside aside the professional development that we do for our teachers. Implementing curriculum is very, very complex. The materials that we use are difficult and on the top of doing all of that, you're dealing with. Uh supporting students with behavior, working with your staff and colleagues, uh supporting parents when they come in and they need support and all that. So I just wanna emphasize the effort that we're putting into making sure that our teachers continue to grow. And I'll leave you with this quote. We're sharing is about equity. We must be relentless in our commitment to great teaching. True impact is not built on occasional efforts, but on the daily intentional actions of teachers. Were prepared, supported and developed to their fullest potential. Consistent, high-quality professional learning equips educators to teach every child to read, think and solve problems. Changing not only lessons, but futures. I'll leave you with that. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
If you have any questions. Oh, I'm sure we got.
Sorry, I have a question for them. Um so I don't know if this actually is pertaining to the uh strategic plan, so I apologize. But the new accountability bill, I believe that starts soon. And so I was just wondering the timeline of. We're supposed to get reports three times a year. Does this count as your as report one of the year? And two, when when are the next um information coming? Because I think I just wanted to prepare.
That might be a better. Yes, I think this does count for that report and we will have. You know, each, I'll give a report every quarter in a sense, so there will be some disaggregated data coming later in the fall. Which is which can count for a report as well. Don't think that's supposed to be really implemented until. I'll have to look at it, but I I don't know if that's actually um those reports going to this year, but I'd have to look at it. I thought it was twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Well, I appreciate getting uh help to start and getting more because I don't think everything more information is about that.
Well, and I I was gonna mention out there his report too. I mean, this is a report I kind of share with my board, though you'll see a lot of my targets. Are, you know, reflect what what the data you just saw.
And one of the requirements of the of the um accountability is that it's gotta be something. In addition to S back that we're using as a, so I imagine I will be that. Yeah, okay. Um, other questions? I do, but.
I have one. Um you know, we talked in the past, I don't remember how long ago, maybe this was just like at the end of last spring or we haven't done this yet, but. We talked about um teachers who were making, finding those teachers who are making a real difference. And having them impart their knowledge to other teachers or what. I don't remember when that was, but are we doing that still?
That's a great question. So for in service this year at elementary level, we're looking at. Uh the teachers have uh they're having implementing the curriculum and they feel really good about what they're doing. We're asking them to see if they're willing to um. Teach or work with other teachers and do like a small like five to ten minute presentations on how they would do, for example. Lending or segmenting or chaining, all those things that we use for which is phonics, are they really good at teaching a. Uh let me see, a a component of the lesson of phonemic awareness and and we're so. Karin was gonna send a message today or tomorrow or yeah, or tomorrow, just to recruit some teachers to help us with that. So yes. For sure, at elementary level, at the middle of the high school, I haven't really talked anything about it, so.
I think it was in elementary that I remember us talking about that.
And we're seeing pretty very interesting discrepancies. We see some teachers who are like.
You said.
Really, really high growth and really high achievement and others who are like still like need like needing a lot more support. Also, you know, the demographics of the of the classroom has a big impact on on performance. The goal will be to get rid of that, meaning. We don't wanna be able to say this classroom is gonna perform like this because this is their, the the type of kids that they have in the classroom. We want all the kids to grow and all the kids to learn regardless of the background, so.
And I think some of this data too is just, it's just a really momentum builder. We had our team meeting last week and I think just the excitement talking to Javier earlier today, just. Where we're, we we were excited going into last year and we're just continuing to be more excited about kind of. Um seeing some of these these measures and and reading the boards and and continuing to. Um have model classrooms to share with other teachers and and this is an excuse because we won't make excuses, but. The challenge will be to continue to do this with funding uh being reduced. And so if you wrote, there's an OSBA article. That came out earlier in the week that talked about, you know, the continued uh focus on improvement with decreasing of funding. So. But I think we have some creative ways, just like you described, to be able to do that.
I'm also curious about like the summer school programs we've had, the uh the impact on reading. We have two years now, I think of that, and I hopefully we can have that again next year and how that has helped. And maybe that competition program that's been going on where kids have been engaged in, that seems to be interesting as well.
Are you talking about the I Ready?
Yeah.
Competition, yeah.
Where you can win pizza and you get to hug with people like that are friends with other people. Yeah, exactly.
So through the data suite, Tiffany's already created groups to that meets that certain level and will track those kids throughout the year, so.
Is that something we can discuss while they're at the job meeting, I'm guessing?
Yeah, we could.
I'll make Tiffany work really hard. I know, she already works really hard.
So I have a comment and then a question. Uh my comment is, you know, I I think it's so easy and I think it's important for us to just take a moment because. It's so easy to go through a presentation, a very nice presentation, by the way, very nice graphics and well laid out. And um just get lost in the data and or maybe things that stand out that. We're not, we don't love or whatever, but I just wanna acknowledge for the staff in the room or anyone who watches this later. There's some really good work happening and behind every one of these numbers. There are hardworking adults working with kids. There's families who now have a better understanding of what. We're trying to teach them that are working hard at home. There's kids doing hundreds of hours of I Ready study um. Over the summer, that's all coming into this and I just wanna acknowledge that. There's some really exciting. Things in this report happening and and all of those things are represented by. People working really hard towards a common goal. So um just to just to acknowledge that and put it out in the room. I think obviously attendance jumps out as an issue, especially um. At the high school level. That was. And I know this is something that. Education as an institution is experiencing. Um the forty-one percent. Change is such a anomaly. I wonder if part of our process, and forgive me if I'm if I'm asking a dumb question here, but. What what does our empirical evidence, empirical data gathering look like when we have students who are chronically absent? Do we feel like we have a good sense of? What is preventing them from coming to school? What are they? What are they saying? I'm. It's easy to tell stories. I'm thinking, oh, it's interesting that the first year we had a cell phone ban. We had such a severe drop in attendance, especially amongst our seniors who are the most likely to. Need to work or to be taking care of family, things at home. Um I'm just wondering what that looks like and if there's anything. The board can do to support that work or if that's conversations you've had to, you know, as. So much of this work is, yes, we wanna work with the kids and get them to school, but we really have to have a good understanding of what the barriers are. And I know we do a lot of that, but in particular with attendance, I'm just curious if you could. Speak to that or if Caitlin, you wanna offer anything or bring a few out or anything there. I mean. I can, I'll just say, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I'll just say, um. We we are addressing this head on. We do have a new tool that we're bringing on uh this year just for notification. And then really kind of getting our grad coaches to drill in on what that actually means and. Remember, this is ninety percent attendance and so um looking at students, seniors that may have eighty-five percent attendance or ninety percent attendance. Um that's what we've asked the team to kind of drill down to a little bit as well. Um but that, yeah, there, we've had it. We have had a trend on um our high school juniors and seniors that have really struggled to get to school.
Yeah, I think there are a lot of reasons behind it. We've done, we very. We started to do some listening sessions, but in order to do listening sessions, usually we want to be around. You know, one of those means another piece that I would say um is. In the past, we maybe have relied on people rather than systems to do some of this work. And when you look at gear or trend data, you you start to see that, oh, maybe we thought we had a system. But really what we had was a person who was working really hard and he knew it.
They were doing it.
And maybe that was not, or that's changed. So we're really doing some work on what systems exist. We do have a new tool that we're very thankful for and we're really excited to um launch that in the next couple of weeks called. Uh attendance, attendance intervention, and that will give us some more disaggregated data so we can look at trends as far as like what periods. Um the other thing is that um we're. Um, the other thing is that um we're also working really hard at the high school to look at. Different ways to access credit. And so sometimes um we even look at things uh very traditionally. And how we earn credits is very traditional. And so it's an all or nothing. Either I'm attending these seven classes and I'm doing these things. And that's how I earn credit, when really because of the students that we serve and because of different laws, we're able to award credits different ways. And I think we're really working hard to figure out on this new page on what it looks like to earn credits differently. That you can earn credits from working, because we do have so many students who do that work. So we're really expanding. Our systems, our data, and just that knowledge of how kids can earn credit, get to that finish line and right away.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I just cur, you know, uh, does the new system allow us to? Oh, so and so, you've happened in school, but you're here today. Come in, we need to do a quick five minute intake with you, you know, to understand what's going on with you and what some of the biggest challenges you're having. So that we can start tracking that data and understand at a bigger picture level what, what the barriers are for kids.
Yeah, so to give us a specific example, in the past, what attendance calculation has looked like is pulling. Various reports and then hand calculating missed periods. So it's very rare that a student just doesn't attend. Day after day after day.
Right.
We tend to see as like, I haven't attended first period in six days and maybe I've attended second period sometimes. Right, so it's really, it's not just pure. And so you had to hand calculate those things to realize, oh, wow. You know, Erica hasn't been in third period in six weeks. Yeah, X amount of like reports to pull calculate that. This tool is live data dashboards. It will give alerts to certain people, has direct text lines for parents. They text back, so like I might not be able to answer the phone, cause I'm at work to figure out where my son is.
Right.
Yeah, I can text you. You mean he's not in third period. Right, so just some of those tools that I think are really going to. Increase the capacity for families.
Yeah.
Um, and for staff, um, so that we can get on it right away rather than, like I hate to say, like an autopsy rather than.
Yes, yes. I use your analogy of the babies in the river all the time.
That's actually a filthy thing.
Yes, yes, absolutely. Thank you so much for that, bigger insight.
So, did you change? Also, I know when my kids learn school, things have changed, but like. Excused absence and unexcused absence and some parents knew that this was an excused absence and some did not. So some kids were more absent because of that. Did that, has that changed recently that could contribute or not?
Not specifically at the high school, with all of the same, you know, the same attendance loss average.
So an absence is an absence excuse or not?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any more questions? Thank you so much. Thank you, how do we update? Thank you for the answering our questions. Really appreciate all the important work that's happening for kids throughout the district. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is the consent agenda. Is there anything anyone wishes to remove from the consent agenda for consideration separately? This is a new question I'm going to start asking, so we avoid.
Yes.
Problems from the past that. Are great.
Question.
Yeah. Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second, Dawn.
Thank you, Rebecca. Thank you, Dawn. Um, are there any objections? Okay, hearing none, the consent agenda is approved. Uh, information and discussion. Um, first item is legislative OSBA update. Who wants to talk about LPC? That moved on or Denise?
I can talk about LPC. So you may have gotten an email from me because as one of my duties or OSBA. Um, as the acting president-elect, which I did not read the five right when I said yes. Is I am in, I get to oversee every single LPC and board of directors election this year. Plus, and there's some NSBA stuff. So, um, there, our region has one LPC position available. Um, as Sarah left, it will, it will um take, start January first and go through the year. Um, the O, OSBA has appointed LPC in the past. We've had good conversation about it. Um, the executive team felt that it gave a person an unfair advantage because they would be appointed in August. And then in August, people fill out, so the incumbent would actually have like two weeks ahead of everybody. And that we just felt that that wasn't a fair process. So um, it's just me for now, but um. So that position is open. If you have any questions on what that position um details, please let me know or you can ask right now. Um, there is several people in our region that are interested in that. Another caveat is that. There's a ninety nine percent chance I will be president of OSBA next year. So.
She's like, um, she doesn't know how she feels about it.
Because I didn't have a plan. I, um, so that being said, I just don't wanna jinx myself, right? You don't wanna jinx yourself and come back and go, guess what? So with that being said, according to bylaw, another board of directors position will be open January first two as well. But that sense typically the president-elect is already in process, so that'll have to be voted in. But since I'm covering an acting president-elect, then I do have to be voted in by um. The, my OSBA fellow board of directors. So therefore, around the first couple of weeks of January. There will be an open position and that will be appointed by the board of directors to add somebody there. So I'm just gonna bring that out. That there is an LPC position, but like two weeks after that. Person has accepted, there is going to be a board of directors. So to kinda make it smoothly, if someone is trying to decide, then they have the options. So that we don't have an L, we could possibly have an LPC person and then they decide they wanna be board of directors. And then we'd have to do an LPC position, but I'm hoping that, yeah, does that make sense?
What is the responsibility of the director position on the board? Is it like to have a certain focus for that particular one or not?
So the board of directors has more responsibilities, but the LPC person, um. They meet twice a year and I think one to two times depending on the legislative session online and depending. And then every Fridays during legislation, they can become on a call, then they help send out emails to the region. Um, the board of director position is more, a little bit more intense. It is four in-person meetings a year. And by the way, every in-person meeting by LPC or board of directors is paid by OSBA. Um, it is uh four meetings a year in person, four meetings online. And then an occasional special meeting as well, but they don't have like a area that they're, each one is over. It's like, it's like our board. Right? Well, the, so the board of directors, I am in region.
You just represent your region.
Yes, okay. Yes, you just represent your region, but there's some caveats to that, but I'm not gonna get into it. Okay.
Is anyone interested or considering running for LPC?
And so we add, just a reminder for those, and um, that's all board voted. So the board would nominate the person. Usually the board nominates their. But yes, and you could nominate someone from a different district if you wanted, but the, our board will nominate the person and it has to, it doesn't have to be anonymous. I mean, like, everybody has to do it, but it has to be.
Anonymous.
Yes, and you, does that mean anonymous? But um, it does have to be a majority of the vote. And then that goes to. All the people that were nominated to their boards, then they fill out a form and then they can speak during the regional meeting. And then all the boards have to then um vote for it. And you can have multiple people per board. So three people from this board could be nominated. But it would make it tricky when we voted. Does that make sense?
It wouldn't make it tricky, it'd make it exciting.
So it'd be, it'd make it tricky to give a majority, maybe.
Well, it could be exciting too.
Yeah, it could be really exciting.
Okay, that's, um, well, congratulations. I was, I, well, many of you at this table were at OSBA. Um, this past weekend and um, Dawn definitely runs that place already, so. Yes. Dawn and I are, we, we get in trouble together though. Um, okay, um, that's great. Speaking of um. The summer conference, does anyone have anything they'd like to share about their experience for the good of basically polling? This is the only one here.
I got some of the download in the car on the way.
Um, one of the things I'll mention, just because it was a, a heavy topic of conversation, was the cell phone policy. Um, they had a, um, they had a, it was a hot topic, a table hot topic session. And then there was a full session dedicated to um the cell phone policy and talking about it. Basically, they went through, you know, the requirements of the executive order. Um, and then they did provide a sample policy. Um, so. Um, one of the things I thought was interesting was. Um, the decision to make it bell to bell and, and make it so that we were required to. Fan cell phones, not only during passing periods, which we already do at the high school. Um, in addition, I know we do at the, at the middle school too. Middle school is bell to bell already. Um, so it's just the high school we've allowed them at lunch. That decision in the executive order was not really based on any data or research. Um, that was based on the governor's opinion of what would make it more or less difficult to enforce. So I, there was a person from ODE there who interfaces with the district or with the governor every week. And so I shared that that was very frustrating um for a district like us who's already made a change. And made an agreement with our families and our students and um, it's been working for us. Um, so. That was interesting. The tricky thing about the cell phone policy is there aren't any rules yet. Um, so ODE. Makes rules and that will help inform what we do, but those aren't out yet. So, um, but we are supposed to pass policy by October thirty first.
Yeah.
And it's, it needs to go into effect by January first, which is really fun to do a mid-year change. Um, if that's what happens. Um, so yeah, it's very complicated. Um, so what, what I've done um is I've kind of engaged Brent and he's worked with Caitlin. And I think there's plans to set up a, a listening session at in-service. So I think because that's an admin directed thing, you can go and just hear, you know, we obviously can't deliberate or we can certainly hear. Feedback. I, I, there are things that we have to put into policy like where do the phones go during the day? Um, and what does enforcement look like and all of these things that are kind of rare. And that was one of the things they talked about at conference was we don't normally put all those mini gritty details in policy. Um, but that's what the executive order says, so um, so I think that'll be helpful. Just to hear, I don't think this is something we wanna do in a vacuum. Um, I think we want to get good feedback from the people. On the front lines who live with us every day. So, um, so I'll let you know when that happens. Um, so you can come and listen if you'd like to hear from our, our staff. And then we'll see, I think it. There are some districts who are just, their superintendents pretty much have decided, right, that we're just, we're doing this now. And it's bell to bell at the start of the school year, which I understand why people do that, because you don't wanna make a change in the middle of the year. We have not done that. Um, I think we're sort of on this path of hearing from our people. Um, and then we'll take up the policy.
And when you're saying this, you're talking about staff members who are dealing with this in.
Yeah.
School.
Correct.
Not getting feedback from students or parents.
Well, that's certainly something we can do, but the next benchmark is in-service. The week of the twenty fifth, that's kind of the next natural opportunity we have to hear. So, um, the thing about. Absolutely, we should hear from our students and families. That, a lot of that work has already happened.
I'm thinking that.
The, the staff did that work last year when they implemented the, the school-based policy. So, um, um, but anyway, yeah, so that, but that's just the first opportunity though. So I'll let you know, that'll be either the, well, Brent can send out something or give these. It'll be either the twenty seventh or twenty eighth, I think, was that Wednesday or Thursday? So we'll get that out too.
So, I have a question. Are we starting on the school year as always?
Like last, like.
Yeah, like last year, with our regular cell phone, then the handbook policy, not policy, but.
Yeah.
And then we're planning on transferring that over when we have to by January first? Are we planning on?
Well, the board can decide to do.
That far?
Well, the board can decide, I mean, we can do what we wish. And I think that's, that's, I mean, the, the, the timeline, I think, is another. Thing we have to talk about and work with our staff and families.
We just today got the official OSBA policy.
Yeah.
So, I mean, districts are just getting that right now on August fourth. But did ODE release the rules?
No.
No, okay, no.
They haven't even had a meeting yet. So they, correct me if I'm wrong, Brent, but there's a rules meeting and then they get in, input on that. It might be one day or maybe sometimes just multiple days. And then they take the data and input and then they make the rules. So I don't know how fast they're going. In the past, it hasn't been a fa- fast process. But maybe they have a plan to make it a fast process. So I don't know. It didn't seem like Spencer knew at OSBA. How long um it was gonna take them to do the rules, but it's not like they have a meeting like this and then they make the rules like an hour. It's usually a, a process.
Well, we have to get them sometime before October thirty first, so.
Yes, you do. So hopefully they go back.
Yeah, um, but one of the things Dawn and I both asked about this. Um, it got me in a little bit of trouble, but they don't even know how it's gonna be enforced yet. So.
Well, what the, what it.
Yeah, how is the governor or OD going to enforce compliance on the policy? They don't know that yet, so.
They have some guesses.
Yes.
Um, and do, I'm, I'm thankful that you and staff is helping with that because I took, I went to the. The workshop and I had more questions after I left than I did before I got there. And more concerns, like it seems like it's just. There needs to be, I hope, hopefully there's more thought into it, because right now there's a, I have some major concerns about some of this stuff.
Yeah, we're in a campus with, that also is a CEP school, so our kid's gonna eat or they're gonna go sit on the curb.
Well, and then the exceptions and how that works and it just seemed very complicated, really complicated for staff, really complicated for parents. And students and it, and I was just had.
Yeah.
Which we can, hopefully they can talk about that.
Yeah, which by the way, undergirding all of this, we all agree that we have to address the cell phone and school issue. That's not. Nobody disagrees with that. I don't think, um, it's just um navigating the complexities of an executive order and. All of those things, so, um, okay.
Can I answer one?
Yeah.
About some other stuff. So, uh, we had a regional meeting and we had great conversation. I think it was one of the. Best regional meetings. I think there was forty or so people that showed up. There was a lot of people. I think we had the biggest. Um, and it was, we had a lot of robust, great conversations and everyone was really happy that we sat in the circle. Um, people asked questions and everyone answered. Um, I did put a call out that I was by myself. And I was getting close to in over my head. So many people are stepping up. I asked, they want a legislative reception. Um, Diana volunteered to help with that. Uh, Angela from Metron helped with that and Mary Anne. So I'm gonna have like a committee for the first time. And I'm so excited. Um, and. It just the overall, I've had so many people come up to be energetic, ready to focus and get. it just the overall, I've had so many people come up to be energetic, ready to focus and get strong and learn so that boards can be stronger and we can all be together. Um, we're, the next long session is making people a little nervous and people want to be strong and willing to really advocate for all students in Oregon. And I see a lot of collaboration between districts and between regions. And I'm really excited about everyone's willing to put in the hard work so that they can help students in Oregon. So I'm, I was, came back very jazzed.
Very good. That's a good update. Um, okay, um, the next item is reviewing the district employee handbook. Does anyone have any questions? But we don't take any action on this, but we do review it. And and light of recent topics of conversation. I did actually have a question. So what part of the handbook, because, you know, the cellphone thing, it's already been an expectation. Now it's going to be board policy at some point. What part of the handbook addresses that? Because one of the things that I think is gonna be important is consistency among staff in enforcing it. And that's why we really want to hear from staff and, um, but that's, um, so where does that fall under? Does that fall under, um, like devices specifically? Um, I think there was some discussion, right, of the staff device policy being updated potentially. Um, but, um, it was just a thought. You don't even have to answer it now. It just came to me today, so I didn't mean to surprise anybody. But something we might want to think about from an HR perspective is where does that show up in the handbook? So, yeah, you're welcome to speak to it now, but you don't have to.
Okay. There's this sentence that says, "All personal phone calls should be made during grade and lunchtime periods unless they involve an emergency." And there is a board policy and I agree, but we need to look at.
Okay, so we can work and code it, yeah.
And I think we'll have to use get counsel and, I mean, because there's, whether that's gonna, I mean, consistency is a key, but also the adults are professionals as well. Like, you know, it's tough to do bell to bell or eight to four.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it'll be something that we'll have to address.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions in the handbook? Okay, um, meal prices. So we'll take action on this in the next forum, right? So, um, so just a reminder, students in Phoenix talent don't pay these prices. What they pay is if they have a second meal, um, the recommendation is to not increase that. And then I don't know if you caught this, for the adult meal prices, has to be higher than the rate for breakfast and lunch. So that's why there's no recommendation to increase those to what they are being recommended to increase to. So we will take action on that next time. Any questions about that?
I have a question. How often do we charge adults?
Probably a better question for Amy.
Here, yeah, I mean, we're supposed to, they're supposed to be charged. Oh, like, if you go for a family's lunch? Are you talking like families that come?
Yeah.
For that?
Yeah.
That's a good question.
Yeah, I don't know, does the principal have?
I think for certain events, they have like some discretion about that.
But it's more for like, if this, this is more staff, I think, when they go.
With staff that's having lunch every day, what have to charge them?
Yeah. Or like when we go for the, the morning meetings twice a year and Amy says, hey, come have lunch. She's not gonna charge us. You know, five bucks, so, yeah. Anyone want to speak to that or? Yeah.
That's just one.
Okay. Um, budget committee vacancies, so we have three. Sarah's not coming back and have we heard back from Roland?
From those two.
Okay.
Okay, I have a good call too. I might have Hector in my phone.
I have Hector in my phone.
I was uncertain about, I didn't hear what you just said, but is there gonna be an open position still?
There's gonna be one for sure. We just, we're waiting to hear back from Roland and Hector.
I, I feel like, I feel like every time we get up against this and then we don't talk about, but I feel like this is maybe something that we could put out in our community, like the Facebook pages that we have this.
This, this might be a good opportunity to have the equity committee. Since we're gonna have to have somebody.
That'd be a good idea.
From that on the budget committee, so maybe we could have that. Okay. So we, are we, the action for us is gonna be declared vacancies?
Yeah, we need to declare the three vacancies. Give the timeline for the application.
Got it.
And I'm down to add, ready to go on what's up.
Okay. Okay, great, um. Uh, okay. Next is agenda structure discussion. I just asked if, if you remember the last meeting, I asked if we just put this on here, if anybody had any suggestions on changes to the agenda for the upcoming year. The agenda structure, sorry.
I know that, uh, student reps in the past have asked to be before essentially the positive. I know that they always go after. Maybe that's something we can consider.
That way people don't steal their thunder, will they?
Yeah, or they have something that's not maybe super positive. They just feel bad about discussing it is what they.
Yeah, that too.
Any other suggestions?
I just think we changed it last year and I really liked the, the change of the structure, so. I agree with Rebecca, but we should listen to this.
Do we want to change that? Is anyone against that? Can you make that change? Just put a slogan left before, etcetera, positive, come start with some crap. So you gotta step up your game because they're gonna steal your thunder now.
They are gonna work with Taylor.
That's good, that's good, so good. Um, okay, next is board guiding principles. Um, we suggested some.
You're gonna have to walk us through some of these. We tried to decipher and write down all the notes and, you know, put them together and I, I think we have a good representation of this.
Yeah.
We, we kinda added that, that, I mean, you can see this, uh, language that's struck and then the red is the new. And then you'll see that little tan colored where we discussed about combining the bullet points, uh, if we wanted to, uh, shorten it a little bit, or we can just keep the above two bullet points, so.
I wanted to share something that Rick shared with me, with me, and I'll just say it, um. He said it was really cool to sit in for this and listen, and while he's there, he remembers who felt passionate about these different things and who had brought them to life. And I thought that just spoke to his institutional knowledge. I thought it was really special to hear him talk about that.
Yes.
But that was someone's platform, you know? Like, oh, I was thinking Sarah, Sarah, and I see that little part, right? So, yeah.
Very cool. That's why we love Rick.
And then the second, uh, to last bullet is just a, a modification to that, um, wherever suggested to kind of reword it, so.
Okay.
Think we'll just be with the board desires on that and then have this for action.
Yeah, so my suggestion would be, hopefully we'll have all seven people here when we take action on it, so that we can decide what we want to do with those two. Everything else looks great unless you had it, you all had any other changes. Dawn, did it look okay to you?
I think it looked amazing and I'm sorry that I had so many suggestions, but. You see the red, it's like, oh my goodness gracious. But, um, I do appreciate all the hard work that you, that Brent and Denise put into this and, um, yeah, and I, and I agree with Rick, there's some of them that are like, oh yeah, that was a big discussion to get that bullet point in, so.
I want to thank you for bringing this up, like, for changing, you know? But I think it's for the better, um.
Yeah.
Just your key night, the detail.
It's such a blessing to have all the different lenses that we have as a board.
Okay, great. We'll take action on that next meeting. Um, next item is superintendent goals.
Yeah, in your package you have, um, the goals, uh, that I outlined based on our discussion from our work session in July and based on, uh, our strategic plan. Um, they have focus areas. Um, and through this new evaluation process, it really kind of drills in each of those uh, areas that are focused for the evaluation process. Um, yeah, I'll entertain any questions or if you have any other, uh, concerns or topics that you want to chat about. And, um, I think it'd be wise to bring this back again when also Nancy and Rick are here.
Yeah.
We can put this on again, cause, um, to just chat about, and it'll give you guys time to read through this one.
I think that's good, yeah. Any questions right now for Brett?
Ju- just so you know, I also looked at the, uh, evaluation last year and tried to highlight some areas where we've, uh, that, that, that you'd like to see improvement and some growth, and so you'll see those reflected from that as well.
Thanks, thank you for having me do that.
Okay, next, and then I'm gonna recommend we do recess after this item, um, before we get through the last two, if that's okay. Um, so, uh, but the Bear Creek property, next steps. We talked about, there was a legal question, first of all, of the, how that works.
Yeah, we, there's a couple options after that, uh, presentation last time to the board. Um, the board, uh, wants to continue to proceed. We could, uh, if we would do have to do an RFP, uh, if we, um, actually are looking at putting some resources into this. Uh, but Mike and his team also suggested that, um, they, we could, uh, do a member, uh, an agreement uh, with the district and his organization, um, where he would seek the grant funding for it and then his fee would come out of that. That would not need a, a RFP process.
Um, that, that.
Yeah, okay, and he, um, and I, I like that option for, for the district where there's no, um, necessarily financial commitment right up front, um, and knowing that the, um, getting into an agreement which will include community outreach and, um,
that was gonna be my next question. I think if we go that route, we just want to make sure, whether it's through the MOU or whatever, that we want to make sure that we have some accountability, that's part of that, so that we can have standards of what we expect.
Yeah.
Engaging neighbors and, um, that we have the ability to approve things, um, such as placement of bathroom facilities and things like that. So, um, as long as we can meet our legal requirement that way and, and have those sort of checkpoints and the ability to have oversight, I guess, was the best word for it.
Yeah, and, and I think that's the direction the board wanted to go. I would get, and he said he is an example of an MOU that he would partner with. And then we would give that to that and say, hey, we want, these are the things that are important to us. Uh, and that he can rework that to, uh, make it reflect that.
Okay.
So, uh, I could start that process to, uh, with Mike and then, um, work with that on that and bring a, a draft, um, to the board, whether it'll be next meeting or a, a second meeting in September.
Well, he had already applied for that money anyway, because there was a deadline, correct?
Yeah, it's a part of it, yeah, yeah, seventy-five thousand, which for a section of it, but.
I know, I know when we met last time on this, we talked about neighbor engagement. We asked specifically if there had been that. So I want to hold our feet to the fire that we are doing that. I have kind of a, this is where George and Carly were living when they lost their house in fire, is in that neighborhood and, um, I hope that we can honor that, that neighborhood.
Who is doing the community outreach? Is it our community forestry or is it us?
It would be a partnership. I mean, that's what, that's what we can have in the MOU and who has the responsibilities of notifying and bringing people in. Um, they, they did that first, uh, piece of it when they had the town hall or the fully invented, uh, community.
Right?
Yeah.
Okay. I have a question about the timeline. Are we, we're just asking questions, are we?
Sure, yeah.
Um, so it says for April, compile community feedback and final landscape design, um, create deliverable. And I understand that part, but I, I'm just curious, like, when we do the MOU, I don't feel like.
This is what's already happened.
I know, but I, I think that we need to have.
Yeah, this was just his time. We'll put Dawn's timeline in. We're not gonna just mirror that into that. We'll do what makes sense to.
Well, I'm just saying, I, I think that, yeah, we need to.
Yeah, we have to outline a lot of things in that, yeah.
And I think I've said this a, a lot, but I don't mind being a broken record on this one. It's, I really get nervous when we create final designs and then we don't have money and then we have to take something out. And then some people get invested in things or, and, or people come in half of the process and, and feel like things are already designed. So I want to be, I want to be really, um, mindful of that process. And the, it's a lot of investment and I know our communities really get invested in what our schools are doing, which is amazing. But I don't want anyone to feel like, you know, oh gosh, my great idea got, got, um. Yeah, or no one listened to me, or why did this happen? And so I really want to be mindful. I, I know it's a, this is at the bond, it really bugs me. Um, and I, I, I know that's part of the creative process, but it's one of my biggest concerns on those committees.
I hundred percent agree. When we say dream big and then we start cutting things off.
Yes, yeah. I, I literally get a little bit of a stomachache when that happens, to tell you the truth.
No, that's a good, that's a great point.
We probably have five to ten minutes left. Do you want to press forward and invite our staff if they need to go, if they can leave? Do we want to take a recess? What do you guys want to do? Leave it up to you. If you need to leave, please leave. Thank you all, great contributions. Thanks for being here. It's exciting to see you all. Happy back to school. Uh, we're gonna press forward here because I don't think we have much longer, um. You really want us to ground for the preschool RFP for Oak Orchard Park?
That's next, isn't it? This will be really quick. We are, we're still in the process of, we're actually going to do this. It got thrown for a little bit of a loop when we looked at space and moving PTRA over here. We know the need is vital. This Head Start is one of the biggest Head Start's waiting lists that we have. It is not a preschool promise spot. It's a scholarship spot, so, um, we know there's a huge need for it. Um, I, I still would like to perceive we needed to identify some space. Uh, we do have partners that are jumping at the bit at Fulton and Provider Preschool, um, in this area, uh, and they want to leave with us. Um, so, uh, this is just for your, but Dad went through this. It's, it's great. It's kind of ready for prime time. Um, just when we want to, um, release that. So we'll probably make a decision if we're gonna do that this year. Um, probably sometime by the end of September.
How, this is the first time I think we've done this, right?
Yes.
Going up for an RFP.
Yeah.
What's different about this idea than, uh, previous?
Well, it, it's cleaner.
Okay.
And, um, what we want, uh, with families that have desired for, um, to have preschool and then the extended care, not all providers, uh, provide that. So that's what we would ask in the RFP.
Right.
And not just a preschool, but that extended care.
Right.
Uh, to make that very clear.
So it gives us asks that we can have to meet.
And there, I mean, there could be national providers that want to come in and try to, um, you know, know, provide, so. We just, it, just like last year's discussion, we know there's a tremendous need for preschool, whether it's preschool promise or, um, private pay or scholarship. There are just not enough spaces and, and we wanted to do everything we can to provide that. And if we have partners that want to partner with us, that's great.
Does this, um, does this preschool provider, does that, is that in exchange of Head Start or in?
No, no, Head Start would be, they would, I mean, they could, uh, apply for the RFP as well. So, and they, they've, we've been informed with them and National YMCA and, um, and we have Road Valley YMCA that could. And they they've, we've been informed with them and National YMCA and um and we have Rogue Valley YMCA that could be partnered. We could have Valley Cara ID uh school that could be a partner as well, so.
Very good.
So I just wanted to kinda keep that, I won't come back until we probably do an action and we commit to doing that, so.
Got it. Um and then the next one renewed.
Yeah, this just came to us, we're gonna have to have this board approved by the fourth of September, cause it's due on the tenth, I think. But we're, we're doing this again and we're done town, middle school, town elementary and we'll apply for Phoenix Elementary and Phoenix High School again. And um to to add the battery packs at Phoenix High School, so.
Do that for a while, I'm so glad to see this.
Yeah, the next round just came out and so um just appreciate John being on it and it is, it just really does.
Um this is Phoenix Town House School, sorry. Okay, I wasn't sure, because we already have battery storage now, yeah.
What would be the process to get that going here as well?
That would be probably the next, the the next round, um want to do it in in Phoenix to. The elementary, just like we did in town elementary, and then the high school would just be as solar, maybe adding some and adding that battery pack. And then if we could, I mean, this has a, the challenge with here is this roof.
Yeah.
And so it would, it would have to be re-roofed to before we can apply to do that. So that's something that John and I have talked about, um kind of managing how we do that, cause this is a, this roof is, well, nineteen eighty two, you can see the sign on.
Yeah.
Door out front.
Would it be feasible to do, like, when talent put a solar paneling behind the community center on? Goals, basically.
Other stuff, yeah, yeah.
Something like that.
Yeah.
Question, um the battery, this is a question, maybe just to, I haven't looked at it at the. Schools that have this now, but that has to be set stored separately from the building, right, with a fire safety.
Yeah, we can, we can look at, like, at the middle school, it is, the battery isn't here yet, we know that was on back order, but it will be in a week or so. Um but we can show you if we have the middle school meeting, um town elementary later in the year. It's it's separate, separate unit, and as you know, I mean, we didn't have as much this summer, but um. The the power is gonna go down when Pacific Power has those fire safety measures, so this has been pretty lucky this summer.
Yeah. Good stuff.
So that'll be your back for action.
Thanks.
And forth, correct, yeah, great.
Um okay, action items, declaration of IT surplus, do I have a motion?
I'm going to declare the items listed in the IT memo as presented by surplus, so.
Thank you, Polly, thank you, Diana, discussion. We'll take role, Diana?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
How about yes? Or superintendent operating agreement, this as a reminder, we thought we already passed this years ago.
We're still not a hundred percent sure, we didn't, but just to be safe.
Cover the base.
We're gonna do it again, so um do I have a motion for this?
I'm going to spread out the board's superintendent operating agreement as presented.
Well, second.
Thank you, Diana, thank you, Rebecca, discussion.
Glad we're actually doing this now.
Yeah, I think this was really good work we did years ago, but um hopefully we have to file it, let's sit in the inner of the ground. Diana, Rebecca, yeah, okay, uh Diana.
But.
I'm sorry, we're voting.
Yeah. She said yes.
Okay, sorry, Polly?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
I vote yes. Um that is approved, next meeting agenda, will we have students at this meeting?
For the next one? Well, I invited them.
We've invited them, okay, so the only change we'll make is to move the student representative report. Up and yeah, any other questions or comments, please let me know.
If we can, I will probably not, but if the um MOU with working community forestry that. Probably can't turn that around that quick, so maybe we can, second meeting in September.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, okay, sounds good, all right, we are journey.